Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, August 8th. Adra, can you have the record show that our city attorney is absent? Our city planners present, our city engineers present, council member Gady is absent, council member Darkenwell is present, council member Dahl is present, and council member Morris is present, along with our assistant city administrator and administrator. At this time, I will ask you all to join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the open forum. This is the portion where the audience or anyone online can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
I have been a resident of Minnesota all my life. And my wife Melissa and I decided to move to Atsigo seven years ago to build our dream home. We decided on Atsigo because Atsigo had good schools. It was a safe place to get one house from. I was raised by a hardworking, history-bound father and an equally hardworking, tech-savvy mother. The other than still values honesty and technology, which I felt tremendously in my personal development. In high school, I set a personal goal of starting my own website, designing, posting content with my friends, and I was able to accomplish that goal with small businesses. From there, I spent 20 years in the financial services industry, with eight years to me. At Wells Fargo, I took on the responsibility of establishing new locations in San Luis and supervising staff in forty, which were specialists in government compliance. I set the goal of being the best manager of theater I could be, and I worked hard to create the environment where people enjoyed coming to work every day. I accomplished that goal by treating people with respect and holding myself in a decent way. As a result, my team had the highest retention rate. Then I returned to the IT and destructive division of Minnesota where I managed a team of business and financial analysts, and I was ultimately responsible for the $3.6 billion IT and starting. The goal was to keep that budget that required 5% variance, and I accomplished that goal by achieving a 0.2% increase. That brings us to today, where I want to utilize my skills and experience to serve the city with my wife and I love so much. Again, my name is Ryan Dillip and I'm right across the city council. I thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer some questions later.
All right. Council questions. Tom?
Mayor, Ryan, I appreciate you coming to the council meetings and other meetings over the past. I think you started coming in May or June, March, in March. This is the first time we've actually had dialogue. I've not had any communications. I don't know if anyone else here on the councils had any communications. I do appreciate when people come up and they hold our feet to the fire because ultimately, when you're sitting behind this S, you're responsible to the citizens of Atsigo. So I appreciate that. You bring up integrity and honesty and accountability, and those are all great. When you first moved to Atsigo, what do you think, because one of your issues is property taxes, what do you think of your property taxes for the city at that time?
You know, it's one of the things that I researched when I decided to move. And property taxes in terms of the property tax rate, which I think what often gets discussed is wealth compared to other cities, and that was important in practice. At the time, I really didn't understand what property taxes meant. So seeing a low property tax rate, that was the extent of my research, and that's why I think Atsigo was pretty attractive to me. And as you know, Atsigo's property tax rate is still in a range of other municipalities.
But as far as like when you first moved here to where it is now, how do you see how the city has done in increasing your property taxes?
So significant increases.
Okay. And I know you mentioned adjusted for inflation in there in your deal. And so I went out and looked, sit there and see like the property taxes that you were paying when you guys first moved here in 2017, is when you first started paying property taxes at $1,615 and believe it's And 2022, those taxes were $1,744.52. So from 2017, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, your rate had increased 8% over those years, which is a little over 1% per year.
My property taxes.
For the city portion, yeah.
Yes.
So do you believe that they should have increased less than that 1% per year?
My personal property taxes.
Yeah.
So I'm not running the lower end of my property taxes.
Well, you're a reflection of a lot of the other people that have moved to this community. I mean, I could give you a lot more examples.
Part of the reason that my property taxes went up is because it went over the amount where it started to increase what
The market value exclusion, is that what you're talking about?
No. So above a certain amount, it actually taxed, that tax has a 1.5% on my base. So the property taxes that I paid have gone up just because of that. Certainly. But what I look at is this property tax in City of Atsigo, it's gone up 193% since 2005. And that's, as you said, adjusted front portion. In that same timeframe, property values only got up approximately 3%. So what I look at is the property taxes in Atsigo have gone faster than any other city in the city. They've gone faster than Minneapolis and St. Paul combined. And part of the reason I'm running is to see what we can do.
Right. And I mean, when I look at your taxes and your tax statement, I mean, obviously, the county portion, that was a huge, that was a 30% increase, a 31% increase from 2017 to 2022. And the ISD 728, the levies that were voted on increased by 26%, but the city portion, for at least yours and a lot of other people that have bought similar homes here, have only increased 8% over those years.
My property taxes.
For your city portion, I mean, when you get your property tax statement, as everyone else does, you get the line item, you get the city of Atsigo, you get the county, you get the ISD, you get other levies, depending on where you're at. One of the things that we fought against for a long time years ago was we were in a hospital district, and we got out of that so that you guys don't have to sit there and pay for that. You can sit there and choose the hospital you want to go to. But your city portion, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, when you're sitting there going back to 2005, you're also having to understand that we're in a growing community. So there's been homes that have been added. There's also been industry that has been added. There's been commercial property that's added. So when you're talking about our property values going up, that's because we've increased, which has allowed us to keep your property tax at 8% from 2017 to 2022, which I think when you look over all the cities and municipalities in the state of Minnesota, is pretty good when you look at inflation. I've got the CPI. If you were to adjust for inflation, that $1,615 number would be $1,950, $1,970. We've actually kept your rate lower than inflation.
And I want to be able to do that for the rest of the city.
But because this is a reflection on us, when you sit there and say in your statement that Atsigo deserves better, you deserve better. That's your take line, and take lines are great. This is just trying to have an open dialogue, an open communication with you. Is when you say that our citizens deserve better, that reflects on us? Just the same way as if I was out here and you were behind this S, and I said, you've got to do a better job. And one of the points that you make is property taxes. And so that's the point I want to make. When you sit there and say that we're trying to double our salaries, and that's not true, I want to sit there and point that out.
As well as Darkenwell, that was said in special meetings by
Okay.
Believe it, council member Dahl suggested.
Suggested?
Yes.
If I asked, when was the last time these were raised?
Yes.
So I don't think it was necessarily, sorry to interrupt, that we were going to do that. It was just a question, if it, when had it been done? I think, again, I commend you for coming to every meeting. I sat in the back and went to every meeting prior before running, and I running and what you put out there and being honest with residents is a huge thing. And so for them to read this about you, when it, in fact, some of the things that you might have said aren't quite accurate, it represents us now currently, and it doesn't, you know, it could happen that you could I think each and every one of us come up here every meeting, and we do our work, and we really try for the residents of Atsigo.
In my opinion, the residents have the discretion to
No, but I'm just saying, being honest to the residents that you're wanting to be a council member. So being honest is really important for them.
I agree. Council member Morris, is there anything that you said that was happening?
Well, I mean, kind of. You said that we were going to raise our fees.
That was discussed.
But we didn't say we were going to do that. We still discussed it tonight. It's in our budget, and that doesn't reflect that.
Yeah, and the budgets, the questions come up. Well, in, Mayor, just to get back to what's been said is they want to raise taxes by 20%. I don't think anyone here wants to raise taxes by 20%. You sit there on your website, say they also want to increase property taxes by as much as 10%. I don't know if it's the 20% or the 10% in order to double their own salary and give staff a raise. Now, I agree, our staff does an amazing job, and in an inflationary environment, they do deserve raises, especially if they're doing a good job. And I would guess, in whatever company you work with, they give raises as well.
So my concern is, at the time that that was written, from that the raise was talked about as a result of inflation. Inflation was coming, and so we need to raise the cost of living adjustment for city staff to maintain 6%. My recommendations were based on that. And that's what I'm looking at, in terms of, in the middle of a recession, the city council is considering raising property taxes in order to fund additional increases. Perfectly fine to do that, but I am going to call it up.
Go ahead. It's, so, I mean, I'll sit there and be the first to sit there and say that I agree that we need to do a cost of living adjustment for the employees and staff here. I believe that's pertinent. I believe it's important. I believe that's deserved. If you don't agree that there should be some sort of cost of living adjustment, you know, that's fine. I just, I mean, when I sit there and say they also want to increase property taxes as much as 10% in order to double their own salary and give staff a raise, I mean, I think that's misleading at best.
Okay.
And if you don't agree, that's fine. But another thing that I just want to bring up, the reason why we had that 45% budget. Yep. The reason why we have that is to maintain our AA+. It's like, like with you guys, it's, you have a credit score. By maintaining that high credit score, we're able to borrow money at a much lower cost. And that is important to the city in looking at future capital projects and other capital projects that we've already paid for.
Yes, to be clear, council member Darkenwell, my initial account of 45% budget safety for next year, but that I can understand a lot of cities do. My concern is that there are many surplus, the $2.4 billion dollars last year almost automatically, because the city council passed this on the consent agenda.
And we've had many discussions over that before it actually got passed on the consent agenda item. And maybe there are meetings that you were at, maybe they weren't, but we had several discussions about that, and a lot of it had to do with the permits that came in where, as you were here tonight, you know, we budget for a certain amount, and sometimes we get more. We put it toward the capital improvements, which in the future lowers your taxes, which allows you to only have a 1% essentially increase on your taxes, or a very low tax rate, because we don't have to then get that money from you later on.
Yes, so by underestimating how much is going to come in to licensing, licenses and fees, the difference has to be made up in profit taxes. So you are, you are increasing profit taxes by underestimating how much you're going to come in from fees to license.
So what you would like to see the council do, and if you were up here, you would like us to raise that number of revenue that's coming in?
So as was discussed in the earlier meeting today, I think the term was being aggressive with some of the assessments.
Conservative.
I'm talking about the other essence, that licensing fees. Should we be more aggressive with those assessments? My position is you should be. My position is you should get as close as possible to what we think the real numbers are going to be, so that when we assess property taxes, we're not taking additional money out of those costs. Does that make sense?
No, I understand your point.
Is there any other questions for Ryan?
And again, I do appreciate you coming forward. I mean, this is something that we're on the record all the time. Everything's on, to get pushback is important. We're on both sides. We're on YouTube every other week, plus also recommend, when I ran, I also did a lot of digging in property taxes and our water, that was my thing. Also recommend, go to school district, ISD 728, go to those meetings. Unfortunately, they're the same time we're meeting, so as a council member, I can act over there. But for running, I suggest you go over there to find out where their budgetary is, because you'll see, 2016, we had a vote for, not how we're going to pay this for you, when, how do you want to pay for it? What state, you know, types funding or private funding? Then there is a, you know, I believe money that they wanted, I'll say a few million. I'm not sure the number, so I won't say it. They pretty much, you know, we recommend we have this. So look into those meetings. That's what council member Darkenwell said. When you look at your taxes, our taxes in the city have been doing great. Look at the school district, and also look at the county. You can always go to county in Buffalo and see when their meetings are going to, and see what they're voting on, see what they're spending. We see council, excuse me, commissioners coming here, and we also discuss. Plus, everything that you see, us for sure, are online, everything's on YouTube that we discuss, and also those special meetings that you've been on. Those are all dictated, all the notes and all the numbers are even on. We even are going to have a consent agenda to approve those special meeting minutes, so everything's there. So I suggest those two, to also go with your city, because, yeah, you look at city taxes. Where, I mean, when I first saw that, when I ran, wow, okay. You know, you look at the number, your sticker shop, which, believe me, I got sticker shop when I first moved in here, too, whatever. Then the city's great, county, school, look at what they're doing, and then to see what's going on and explain that, too. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mayor, just, just some factual basis from the league of Minnesota cities. They have a property tax calculator out there, and if you plugged in numbers, they only go up to 2021. If you go to 2021, a house valued at $497,700, the estimated market value. For Albertville, your city tax would be $2,329. Big Lake would be $2,410. Buffalo would be $2,700. Dayton would be $2,557. Elk River would be $2,218. Monticello would be $1,775. St. Michael would be $1,783. And Atsigo, in what you had to pay for, Atsigo, the city portion tax was $1,725. It's lower than all our surrounding cities.
It's in line for my
You would call $1,725 versus $2,700 in line?
In terms of what the rate increase has been, is my biggest concern.
The 8% over from 2017 to 2022.
So here's why I said we are in the middle of a recession. Things are not going to get better in the next few months. And in the past, the council has raised taxes while property values have declined. That's part of the reason I got involved, I've been looking at the city council minutes and then meetings, is because I'm concerned for the next few months. We have to lower property taxes. And I understand that city property taxes are maybe 25% of the whole picture of property taxes. But when I say property taxes, in City of Atsigo, it's not 193%. I'm just talking about the City of Atsigo's proportion of property taxes. And that's what I think.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other comments during open forum? All right, we'll move on to item two, to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? Moving on to item three, under consent agenda, a motion would be in order.
Yeah. You need to vote on.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Brittany. We have a motion by Tom, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is the consent agenda. A motion would be in order.
Mayor, I like the motion for consent agenda, or keep the consent agenda as written.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving on, city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything? I will be out of town as of Wednesday, so just notify you guys through Friday. Anything else? Then we'll move on to staff reports and updates. Sabrina?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates. We moved on to our semifinalists for the Parks and Rec director position. So we do have, was just called for a special meeting on August 23rd for the finalists. So we'll have more information as we get closer to that.
Is there one or two?
We are doing a round before that with the goal of two going to council.
Okay, thank you.
Mechanic position is posted, as I think most councils were now. Max's last day will be this Friday, so that position is now posted. Hopefully getting someone in soon. And then our administrative intern, Joy, his last day is the 19th, so it's been really fast. That was a fast summer. So he'll be heading back to grad school, or he'll be heading into grad school, so.
Where's he going again?
Hamlin, he got accepted, so he'll be getting his masters there, and that's been great having him, so just update on him.
Will you be putting together, or can Joy put together some, you know, kind of what he did during his time here? I think that'd be really helpful for us council members to see what projects he worked on and kind of got his hands in before he moves on.
Yes, yeah, part of the grant app, or part of the grant that we received for that requires him to fill out a report, as well as the city to fill out a report that we can go over.
So, yeah, even if it's in an update, if it can be attached, it would, I think, be really beneficial. Thank you. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier today, I sent out an email to all of you. Wright County is asking for interest in the opioid settlement advisory council. We do not need to appoint a member from each city, but wanted to share that opportunity with you in case you're interested. Their first meeting isn't until September, so get a couple weeks to figure out if you want to be a part of that. And then lastly, we have upcoming budget meetings, both on August 22nd and August 29th, which is not a regular council meeting night, so it is a standalone budget meeting that evening, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Adam, I saw your thing about the opioid settlement, and is it, I mean, there was a ton of people attached to it, to the email. Do they have a kind of ratio of what they want township versus city staff, so they're just looking for?
Correct. They're just looking for people that are interested in helping guide how that money is used in Wright County.
So they got, what, 3.6 was it?
I don't have the exact figure in front of me, but it was, yeah, in the millions of dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, ready tomorrow is the primary elections, and they are from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at your four precincts. And also that the candidate file closes next Tuesday, August 16th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Dan?
Mayor, thank you. The planning commission has a meeting August 15th at 7:00. Five public hearings on the agenda, so it'll be a busy evening.
Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Walsh Estate is completed, except for mailbox and some seating, and then that and that they had parked their vehicles in. We need to do some patching on that area, but otherwise, that project is done. Looks really good. I drove it tonight. Rides really well. I don't know if Kevin has anything. He's been probably through there. And then also the micro surface as well is underway. I think it's getting close to complete, but driven on some of those roads, and they look pretty good also.
Yeah. Perfect. Jason?
Just kind of continuation of some of the I can also call it an initiative. The concern that I always had was just the ability to call 911 or just be able to contact dispatch, and so I've really been trying to get into our computer system really deep, and it's like I've been talking about dispatch. Just how everything comes in, just Atsigo seems to be, we find, like, a corner of one. I, you know, we were going for the newsletter, and everything, I'm always trying to have a distinction distinction on how people should contact, and what burdens and obstacles. It doesn't seem like progress that I want to be coming along with that. I'm trying to go through our computers and our chats. Of course, then I'm not afraid of programming and IP attacks, and that's, yeah, a lot of pieces to that is worth owning. I mean, I know I can use some of the different ones. So maybe truly grab for that, hold for a while, I need to use some of the traditions that are going down. But I'll see if I can, I'm actually just kind of a small radius, but we need to, I'll need to write a great bill, center of the city. That's what they call them, a block of the process, if that makes sense.
I don't want to go backwards, I guess, is my big thing, but it's, it's almost getting to a point where I don't want them to have to go, or I need to call nine or this, you know, they're, they don't for sure that line going directly to that location. You know it all well, but I don't have to build nine and one, my build that. It's me if there's any new regulations, that's a piece of the council that's kind of, instead of using, um, oh, it's getting to be a bit, and with the call nine one one, the cell from power structure. Whether going away from that with the idea of Facebook and every single time I'll jump on Facebook and check whatever. Or if I want to go check Snapchat, in the case. Both services could help exactly. So they're trying to, uh, so a few of these are trying to just self-recognize. It's, it's a growing frustration up here. People are bossing around here. Answering five questions. Sure, right down to nine one one, but don't hold you down here. So like I said, there's, there's so many variables. It's nothing we can really do until other technology patches of us, um, we're doing small little things. No different type of, type of, type of conversations for your city staff, it's like, take phone numbers that when you call or dispatch, there's more of them. Say, hey, this city of. I had the conversation. This cell phone or the number. The number pop up, it's treated like a merchant, you just get something there and figure it out. So that's a little bit of casual.
Anyone else have anything? Jason?
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you. All right, does anyone else have anything? And a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Man, Mayor, I'll be making a motion, but in conclusion, uh, in the words of Mark Twain, there are lies, standbys and statistics. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. The meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending. Have a good night.